Says live on YouTube, is that correct?
Yes, down it is.
Okay, good evening, this is Larry Wallen Superintendent Page Unified School District. Welcome everyone, we want to share with you some changes that are taking place in our school district. On October 12th, we will be implementing a hybrid model. And that means some students will be onsite and some students will remain virtual. Anyone can remain virtual that chooses to. Before we get into the technicalities of that though, I want all of you to recognize that October is National Principals Month. What is National Principals Month? It's about the visionary leadership and tireless pursuit of success. For each student, principals guide and support our schools in ways large and small every day. And I mean large and small every day into the night. And we face new challenges presented by COVID-19. Our principals have come through when it mattered most. We've created all the documents that we need to mitigate the circumstances related to COVID-19 through endless, endless, endless meetings, starting all the way back in May. And those meetings have been guided, led, debated, shot, moved around, whatever it took to get the best answers for our parents. So principals, thank you for being a guiding light during these trying times. And we're going to be celebrating you all month long, so get ready for some things that are going to be happening. As we begin this, because we really want to focus on what's happened in the classroom, I want to begin with a video, if I can do this correctly, that kind of summarizes what the ideal learning space might look like. So let me see if I can share my screen. And bring this video out. Can everyone see the video, thumbs up? Can't see it?
Larry, if you can make it full screen.
Make it full screen.
Just in the bottom corner.
Like that? Is that better? Make it full screen. Is that showing? Okay, got it, okay. This is an excellent interview showing what virtual learning, the challenges, and what some of the possible solutions there. So I'd like to share this with you, I'm gonna go back and start over again, everyone. So here we go.
Larry, we're not hearing any sound from it.
Okay.
It might be because your headphones are locked in, I'm not sure, but that could be why.
Okay, let me pull out my headphones and see. Then I won't be able to hear you guys, but let's see if that works. Do it again.
Hello, I'm Brian Henderson, the Assistant Principal.
You can hear, okay.
And I'm here to demonstrate to you what is the optimum learning environment for remote learning that will give our students the best chance to be able to focus, concentrate, and do their best work. So come on in and let's take a look. As you can see, this is not really the ideal learning environment. I'm sure my home is very similar to many of yours out there where it can be noisy sometimes, there's a lot of distractions. But it's not really conducive to real learning.
Yeah.
Everything you need to be learning. And concentrating, you know, not too pretty. Again, I've gotta do, I've gotta do my homework, I can't take the baby.
I think you're Brian talking, cutting you off, saying, oh, there you go.
No, that's not gonna work, let's try this again. So come on in, now let's take a look. Hey, so as you can see, this is a much better environment for learning. I'm in a well-lit, relatively secluded part of the house. There is no music playing. My back is close to a wall, so there's not going to be a lot of traffic behind me. The dogs are put in the other room.
Okay, well, it'll just be a few minutes.
I'm still dressed for success, I'm not wearing my pajamas. Even though I'm working from home, I'm showing, I'm demonstrating that I'm ready to learn. I have all of my materials here, close by. And I'm ready to do the best job I can, which means while I'm online, I'm going to participate. I'm gonna check in with my teacher. And I'm also going to use Power School to make sure that my attendance has been accurately recorded and that my assignments and grades are up to date. Now, time to get to work. Just because we're working from home doesn't mean you abandon the sand devil way. Be kind with your words in the chat and your body language while on camera. Get involved by participating in your Google Meet. Work hard both synchronously and asynchronously. And remember, live the sand devil way at home, at school, and in your community.
Okay, is my sound back up? Okay, there may have been some technical diff- Is that my screen?
Larry, we're just seeing all of us now, I think you've stopped sharing your screen.
Say what?
I don't see you sharing your screen right now, it's just us that it's on here.
Okay. Just a minute. And you're not seeing me? Oh, you're seeing me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll get it together here. And that's the challenge of virtual learning and getting this all correct when we use Zoom and Google Meets. So, that gave you a little introduction, if you got to see that. Let's go ahead and move into preschool, and what is the day look like for a preschooler?
All right, well, thanks Larry, I'm glad to be here and we're looking forward to Monday and having students coming on our campus. At the preschool, we're doing a half-day program right now to keep some of the class sizes lower and smaller. So we are Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 11:00, and then from 12:00 to 3:00. And they're all depending on how many students choose to come back. So we're really focusing on building up our students' language skills, their vocabulary, and their social emotional skills. And so we're very excited to have them come back.
I don't know where that music's coming from. Hold on, I just, I don't know how to stop it. So I'm gonna log out and log back in. So Penny, if you want to keep on going, I'm gonna-
I can do that, sure. No problem, I can do that. So the preschool, one of the things we're gonna be working on is we are trying to take our classrooms outside. So we're gonna be doing as much outside learning as we can. We've got a space where we actually have what we call an outdoor classroom, where we are able to have the same thing you see in our classrooms, the centers, the sensory experience, the science experience, the dress up, the things like that that we're doing, we're taking that outside. So we're using that as part of our mitigation strategies to help reduce the chances of the spread of COVID-19. So we'll be doing that as long as we can, as long as the weather, you know, allows for it. And then if we are still the same numbers that we're at now, then we'll actually move our class to the afternoon when it's warmer. So that's something we're gonna be looking at. But overall, we've had some great success with our online learning as well. We're gonna continue that in the afternoon. So kids who are not electing to come back in person, they will still have some asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities in the afternoon. And even our kids who are coming back are still gonna be expected to log on and do some of our activities on CSO that we would normally do if we had a full-day program. So we're really looking forward to that. I'm not sure who we had next on the agenda, or what the agenda was, you guys know? I don't remember if we had the next school, did someone else want to share?
I can go ahead and share, I can get started.
Great, great, thanks Nancy.
Good evening.
Turned over to Lakeview.
I'm Nancy Warner and I'm the principal at Lakeview Primary School. Just a couple of changes, important changes that we want to make sure that our parents are aware of. So I want to share with you first, like I mentioned, a couple of important changes. First of all, we've been used to an A-B schedule where some of our students attend during an A group and some of our students attend during a B group. And we would like our parents to be aware that starting on Monday, regardless of whether you're attending in person with us or if you're remaining remote, all students will attend a full day of instruction. So school will begin at 8:00 AM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and go until 3:00 on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and we have the early release on Wednesday. So that's, that's a couple of really important things that parents need to be aware of. The schedule change for all students regardless of when or how you choose to attend. Special class schedules will change, so parents will want to be aware of that as well. Something that will not change, that will remain consistent in the way that our students are learning now, is that we will be using Google Meet as our platform for synchronous learning. So students will continue to log in to their Google meetings with their teachers and will also continue to use CSO as our asynchronous learning platform. So students will still go to their CSO accounts to engage in learning activities and also take some assessments depending on how their teacher assigns them. We also, I wanted to share with you a sample schedule of what your student's schedule may look like. Every one of these components, these learning components are present regardless of your grade level. So this might be, for an example, a kindergarten schedule and we may have a second grader. All of these components will be the same, they'll just be in a different order. So every student will receive reading and math instruction every day. They'll still continue to receive social emotional learning lessons as part of their morning meeting with their teachers. Small group instruction for targeted support will be provided for our students every single day. Breakfast and lunch will be served in the classroom. And you'll also notice that there are frequent breaks throughout the day to give our students the opportunity to get up and move. Some breaks are longer than others, some just give them the opportunity to stretch, get out of their seats, distance themselves enough to be able to have a mask break. And then others are a little bit longer, so the students can actually go outside, get some fresh air. We know that the stamina from going, from learning for a half-day and then again gaining the stamina to go to school for an entire day, that will take some time. But we're ready. We know that parents probably have quite a few more questions, so we'd like to urge you to please either visit the website or our Lakeview website. The information was also put on ClassDojo or on CSO, so we have a lot of information out there for you. Please go and visit those platforms and learn more about our daily routines and procedures. Thank you.
Excellent, okay, we're ready to move on to Mary Desert View, grades three through five.
Good evening, everyone, we're so excited to have children back in the building. I've been visiting our onsite support students every day this week and it's great to see them all participating in class. So on Monday, students will enter the Desert View Campus in three locations. Each location will be, will have two staff members conducting health screens. And students who are being dropped off or walk, or walkers will be screened at two locations before they enter Desert View. One location is by the main entrance of the school off of Lake Powell and the other entrance is by the Page Preschool off of South Navajo. Bussers will be screened at the bus ramp. If your child arrives at 8:15, after 8:15, then they must be dropped off at the main entrance facing Lake Powell Boulevard to complete the screening. At each health screen location, breakfast will be handed out to students. So from 7:30 to 7:50, students will remain outside in the fresh air with teachers supervising in these locations. Students will be expected to wear their masks even when they're outside. The only exception is when they're eating. If a student wants to take their mask off, they will let a staff member know and the staff member will direct them to an area that is six feet away from any other people. So we've got specific areas where students will be in the morning depending on where they arrive. So students dropped off at the preschool or walkers entering from the preschool area area will remain in what we're calling the transition area, which is between Manson Mesa High School and Desert View. There's a big grassy area that way, in that area. Bus riders will remain in the area by the rock wall. And then students dropped off in the front will go to the upper field. No equipment will be used at this time or at any time during the school day. At 7:50, students will enter the building and report to their classrooms. And each classroom has hand sanitizer and each student will be expected to apply hand sanitizer upon entering the classroom. Let me show you the schedule of a Desert View, your Desert View students. Okay, so we begin at 8:00 and from 8:00 to 8:15, we will continue to finish up the breakfast in the classroom. But more than likely, they'll be finished with their breakfast because they're being handed out at the screening area. So this time will be used as a classroom huddle. From 8:20 to 9:05, we've got reading and writing and specials. 9:05 to 9:15, the break, 9:15 to 10 o'clock, math and specials, 10 to 10, 10 a break. 10:10 to 10:55, the subject missed during the early morning specials or a specials class. And then we have another break from 10:55 to 11:05, 11:05 to 11:50, science or social studies. 11:50 to 12:45, we have a staggered lunch. And then from 1:00 to 3:00, we have small group instruction led by the classroom teacher. It's important to remember that from 1:00 to 3:00, your students should be completing asynchronous assignments or if they're in person, they'll be participating in small group instruction with your teacher. So we ask to please, 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 parents, help your child check their Google Classroom for updates regarding their schedule. Their small group schedule, sorry. Okay, and then dismissal will occur in a staggered way as well in different areas in order to maintain social distancing. We have walkers and pickup students will exit by A door, group one to the bus ramp and exit H door, group two, the upper field, and group three will be the Rockwall Courtyard. We, so we decided to maintain the half-day schedule for many different reasons. But if you notice too, we did, one of the main changes is that we, the classes went from 25 minutes to 45 minutes because during this, this remote learning instruction time, we've determined that 25 minutes was just way too short of a time. So like Nancy said, we encourage you to call the school, ask any questions, visit the website. Please feel free to contact us if you need any further clarification on anything, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, what an organization there, relayed out, sounds great. Okay, Ms. Covington, middle school, what's the challenge?
Good evening, good evening. So just like my partners at the elementary school, we have some common themes, some common procedures that we will be using. And that includes multiple entrances at the beginning of the school day, temperature checks, the hand sanitizer stations within the classroom, the spaced or staggered transitions between classes. I'm going to share my screens, one of the main things that we will need to remember for the middle school is that at the beginning of the day, we do have different entrances for our students. See here. So if you look here, the main entrance for, the main thing that our parents who drop off students need to know is that we will no longer have our, our student drop-off for those who are carpooling with their parents. We will no longer have that at the front of our building in our normal drop-off area. We will be using our fire lane that's in the back of our school. So if you are a parent or guardian who drops off your student, you will now do that in the rear of the school. And there we will have a checkpoint for those students. Students who are walking, there will be two different entries that they're walking depending upon how they are entering the campus. If they're coming using ninth, they will enter by the, by what we call the dinosaur, it's outside of our elective wing. If they are entering or coming, walking onto the campus along El Mirage, they will use the entrance that's nearest to our eighth grade hall. And then we also will have stations that are available for our bus riders. Once again, we are all using our temperature checks, we'll use different entrances for the students that are coming in. This is what our schedule looks like on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We do have 49-minute blocks that also include a four-to-five-minute max mask break during each of those periods. And then, of course, sanitizing in between the, the periods. The mask breaks locations are varied for the different hallways and the different classrooms. On Wednesday, our schedule is altered just a bit, we still have quite a few minutes for instruction. And the difference between our Monday schedule and our Wednesday schedule is that on Wednesdays, we will not have reteaching in Ridge. But we will have the other classes on the schedule and that gives us more time for that tier-one instruction. At the end of the day, we will continue to have what we call our office hours. And the reason why we have that built into the end of the day is because our students that will be picked up from the middle school are later on the time for pickup. So that allows us to have that opportunity to support students starting on their, their, either their homework or their practice sessions while they're still on campus waiting for the bus. Our dismissal, we will immediately release, students who are walkers and pickups will release them at 3:00 PM, they'll be released from their classes to head straight to the front to be picked up. And then at about 3:05, that's when we'll start releasing students from classrooms in a phased manner to go to different locations where they can receive some support from our teachers until their buses come. This is just a quick overview of what our day will look like. All of our classes, as I mentioned, will have the mask breaks and we will also have intentional movement happening within our classes to make sure that students have their breaks built in. Students who are remaining in remote learning will have their screen breaks at the same time that students who are in person will have their mask breaks throughout the day. And they will also join their classes with the intentional movement just to allow them an opportunity to change their scenery and give their eyes a break from the screen. I know that our next colleague at the high school will be showing you some, some actual photos of some of the things that we have at our school and that is all that I have to share with you.
Thank you very much, ready to go, that looks great. What an organization, wow. Everything is already in place, getting ready for that hybrid environment. Okay, Ms. Martin, high school, oh my gosh, high school graduation, freshmen, high school seniors, take it away.
Hey, Sand Devil Nation, your principal Anne Martin here. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. I'm not seeing my, okay, perfect, thank you. So I do want to start by having you take a look at some pictures as I talk through the day at Page High School. So we have been talking about how students will enter campus. And one of the things that's super important, because we are reopening because it is safe, is that everyone is still taking a pause in the morning to do a wellness check. So parents, we are relying on you to be our first wellness check. So each morning, ask yourself, is my child feeling sick at all? If so, please do not send them to school. We have the same mitigation strategy as staff where we are staying home if we feel unwell. If they feel well, we want to see them at school in person if they've selected to do that. So ask yourself, does my child have a mask? Does my child have their school supplies? Chromebooks and laptops are now a school supply, so make sure that they bring those with them to school. The bus stops the second wellness check and then as you've already heard, upon entering any of our campuses, there'll be a wellness check with a temperature check. So the picture that you're seeing is the Plexiglas standard that your student will approach. Their temperature will be taken. We do have signs to direct them to make sure their mask is being worn properly. Their nose is part of the respiratory system and so it's super important that that is covered as well. And then, of course, we want to, we have been taking extra effort to make our campuses as touch-free as possible. And so we want to remind them not to, to touch the glass as well. So as they enter campus, we know where the bus ramp is, so bus riders will enter at the bus ramp. We ask that parents are aware, and we've sent a couple of letters out, that drop-off and pickup has changed at Page High School. So that is now in the front of our school at the intersection of Lake Powell and Coppermine. So if you drive your child to school, if you pick them up, that will be in the front of the school. The CAB gate is only for our student drivers and of course for walkers on that side of our 400 block of our campus. Students will not be allowed to enter campus unless they pass that wellness check, which includes a temperature check and are wearing their mask properly. In order to provide supervision, which is important as we try to mitigate COVID-19, it's important that you understand that we do not have supervision until 7:30. So please do not drop your students off before 7:30. I know there have been times where I arrived to work around 7:00 and we have students waiting out front, sitting on benches. We just can't continue that. Our campus won't be open till 7:30 and so we really need that to be honored. Please do not drop your students off until 7:30. Lunchtime is a change as well and I'll show you some pictures of that in just a bit. So our students at Page High School will all eat on campus. There will be no off-campus lunch this entire school year. Students can bring their own lunch with them in the morning, but we will not be allowing parents to drop food off throughout the day. So something to also understand is that our district has been able to get free breakfast and lunch for Page High School students through the end of this year, so through December. So let me show you some more pictures. So you're gonna see a lot of extra signage around all of the, the campuses. And this is just some of the signage that students will see to help direct their path. So we're gonna use the idea of stay to the right to be polite. And so just like we drive on the right side, we're gonna enter doors and exit doors from the right. So these are just some of the entrances, this is our J building where CTE and art classes are located for the most part. They're gonna see these signs around campus as well. We know that some of our students have really been at home for the most part. And so wearing a mask all day long is going to be a new thing, but it is such an important thing. So wear your mask, stay six feet apart, do not share, and wash your hands. I know it seems kind of silly at the high school level, but it is super important and we're gonna make sure to, to reinforce that in many ways that we can. but it is super important and we're going to make sure to reinforce that in many ways that we can. You see even Sandy, the Sand Devil has got a mask on there. So just some more signage that you'll see around campus. Restroom signage, twenty seconds is the standard now for washing hands with soap and water. Here are some examples of our classrooms. This is our band and orchestra classroom. So you can see it does look different if you've been in those rooms before. There's a bigger spread of desks or seats in this case. There's our choir room. Here's just another entrance. You'll see mass required signs around campus. Here's another classroom. Classrooms all have a hand sanitizer station. Some of them have a large pump bottle instead. And then because there are some supplies. Is my video still working? It looked like my head was spinning there for a second. Okay. I think it must be the pictures. Because some materials cannot be, we don't have enough for every single student. You can see that classrooms are equipped with what we call the dirty bucket. This denotes that those need to go in through a cleaning protocol and sit and wait to be cycled back into use. So here's just another classroom. Many of our classrooms still have the same amount of desks that they had prior. What we talk about at Page High School is we distance the humans, not the furniture. We actually don't have enough storage to move all of that stuff elsewhere. So keep in mind that the humans will be distanced. Just some more signage that you'll see. And then we, our campus is going through a beautification process. And I wanted to show off some cool stuff that's been going on. You heard about the Sand Devil Way from Mr. Henderson, our assistant principal in the earlier video. You know, we, we want to welcome our students back in a very safe environment. We want to remind them that they're still sand devils and we still want that, that fun campus spirit as well. So let me also, I'm going to stop this. And then I'm going to show you the schedule here. Bear with me for just a second. All right, here we go. Second chair. All right, so now you're seeing our schedule. And as Superintendent Wallen said, hybrid learning begins on Monday, October 12th. And that is for all, this schedule is for all of our students. Students that elected to come in person two days a week and then students that elected to remain remote all five days of the week. So we are moving our instructional time back to what we had in prior years. So first period begins at eight and the last period of the day ends at three. All of this information has been emailed to our Sand Devil parents. Will be on our website, our Facebook page. I know it's a lot of information, but please make sure you read through it. We've attached the schedules again, the A B calendar days, which we're still using. So let's see, Monday is an A day. So keep that in mind. You'll see all of those attached. This bell schedule is attached. The maps of our school are attached. We've got freshmen that we're welcoming back for their first day of ninth grade in person. And we want to make sure that they have a map that they can preview because we realize it can be a little nerve wracking to walk into high school for the first time. Students will not be using lockers. So that is important that, that students realize they have to carry their things with them and keep within their space throughout the day. Last thing, we will continue to not have after-school services and activities. So these services like clubs that have been meeting, tutoring that's been going on, one-on-one help will continue virtually for all students, even the students that come on campus a couple of days a week. So all students will be exiting campus by three fifteen. Students riding the bus will wait at the bus ramp. If you pick your child up, remember that's at the front of the school now. All pickups and drop offs are at the front of the school. Please make arrangements to pick them up between three and three fifteen. We are needing to get our campus cleared and our custodial staff ready to begin the cleaning process daily. Once again, all of this is emailed to you. It'll be in the mail. It's on Facebook, lots of attachments. I know it's a lot, a lot of information. It was also emailed to your students. So you can check their email and read through it with them. I think that's it. Larry, you're on mute.
Thank you. I like that. Stay to the right to be polite. What a great little song. That, that as a mnemonic device, I'm sure every kid, every student will be remembering. Excellent, excellent. Okay, let's move on to, pardon?
That's the Hoosier in me.
That's the Hoosier in you. Well, you know, I'm a, I'm a brier from the Wildcat side. So we gotta, we gotta watch what's going to happen here. Absolutely. Thank you. So let's move on to Manson Mesa and Sage and Sand Virtual Academy. Dr. Hubble.
Hi, good evening. My name is Trina Hubble. I'm the principal of Manson Mesa High School as well as Sage and Sand Virtual Academy. I'm going to start by sharing my screen. Let's see. Sure, can you guys see my screen? Okay. All right, so we share a lot of the same procedures as well as protocols that the middle school as well as the high school have put in place. Things to remember, our bus riders will be screened at the Desert View Bus Ramp. Walkers can enter through the front entrance where they will be screened right outside the door. Here is an example of our daily schedule. We follow the traditional block schedule. Google Meet is the learning platform for synchronous learning. And Edutiny is the learning management system for Sage and Sand Virtual Academy and also serves as the platform for asynchronous learning that occurs for our Sage and Sand students. We are looking forward to having our students back in the building. Thank you.
Do I need to?
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, got it. Thank you. Checking on that. Thank you. As you can see, it's a big change. It is getting ready for a new world. Today I was online with the Kopeanu County School Superintendents throughout the county, and we also were lucky enough to have Superintendent Hoffman from the Arizona Department of Education join us. And we were talking about the fact that this crisis has brought about a lot of change, but we need to rise above the crisis now and realize that we're building a new reality. I know one of our staff meetings, I went in and said, Captain Kirk is here and we are ready to launch the USS page to go out and do new things and new worlds. It's going to be different. We've got to get prepared for that and make that happen. And we, you know, I read an article that said masking, for example, which is right, very personal, very intimate, is going to be something we're going to be doing for five years. And so instead of working on the crisis of the moment, we need to, yes, deal with that. We put together very strict protocols in transportation and we've added more bus drivers, we've added more custodians, everything we can do to make school as safe as possible for your students. And so those of you who chose online, virtual, thank you. Those of you who are coming onboard, thank you. We'll work it out as we go along and see where we are. So if you draw three boxes in front of you, the first box is virtual learning. And that's where we've been the past nine weeks in that environment on half days. In the middle box is called hybrid. And that is where we're headed for. I don't know. The metrics stay good, could be down the road here before Christmas that we possibly could return all together. Somewhere in there based on our metrics and we're always watching those metrics every day. So that's the hybrid model, which is bringing about great change. And then the third box, if you draw it out, is traditional going back to school. The only issue is it's not traditional because we're still going to be virtual. Can you imagine us handing out two thousand two hundred Chromebooks and then saying, oh, okay, we're going back to traditional school. Everybody turn their Chromebooks back in. Everybody return the six hundred and fifty hotspots, the two thousand two hundred headphones, the two thousand two hundred thumb drives that are in those and give all that back now because we're going into a different world. Whoa, not likely to happen that way. And as you're watching what's happening around the state, we're all going to be moving toward that virtual piece. So that is one of the, the, the big challenges that I want you to consider, parents, as we move forward with this, is that this is going to be the new norm. And we're building it as we go. None of us have ever been here before. So all of us, our first-year teachers, first-year principals, first-year organizers and what we're doing. We try to do the best we can to make that happen. And I want to thank our principals again. I don't know if it got across in the first opening that I did, but this October is National Principals Month. And we want to, to honor our principals for being that guiding light during these times. As you just see, them guiding your students to school every day. So we're going to be celebrating all month long. We're just getting organized on that. But we want to be honoring our principals for their dedication and thanking them for all they've done because we couldn't make this happen without them. That is absolutely the most important thing. And thank you, parents, for supporting us as we move forward. Thank you so much. We had some questions submitted and I'm going to go ahead and ask some of us to share the question and the answer and move forward with that. So Mary, you want to take the first question?
Sure. The question is, what resources or support are you providing to my child's teacher to allow them to effectively teach in person and online at the same time? How can I be sure that my child will be getting a quality education while one teacher is split doing two jobs? So we understand that the expectation to teach both in person and online is new for all of us. As Larry said, everyone is new this year to a job that they may have been doing for twenty, thirty years. But one thing that remains the same is our understanding of effective instruction. We will continue to use the best practices that we know are good in our classrooms, both virtual and brick and mortar. Our instructional leadership team works together to coach our, coach and support our teachers in their use of evidence-based instructional strategies every day. Teachers also meet every week with their grade level team on Wednesday and Friday to plan their lessons. All lessons and activities are based on our state standards. So learning expectations and outcomes remain the same for both in-person and remote learning students. I can assure you that we are working hard to provide our children with a quality education through thoughtful collaborative planning around the standards and through the use of effective instructional strategies.
Larry, you're muted.
I'm going to get that down one of these days. Why is the town hall not being conducted in person as well as online? Well, because we conduct all of our meetings virtually right now to allow us to protect the social distancing requirement and allow us to get close monitoring to give the spacing that we need. Online works for all and most importantly, it meets the standards of a safe environment. Alyssa, you want to take the next question?
Sure. The question was, or statement, Superintendent Wallen has repeatedly mentioned that school is not going to return to normal, possibly ever. However, it seems this new hybrid plan is trying to recreate normal school at the expense of our teachers and our kids. Despite the perception, normal as we once knew it is no longer normal. As we are now moving to one-to-one or being a one-to-one district, we are now actually creating a new normal. In addition, the hybrid model was created and implemented as a means to provide options for students and families to remain engaged or for some of our students who have had difficulty connecting to actually begin their engagement and to continue the new learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, today, as I said, I was in a meeting with the, the state school superintendent and I was talking to her about the fact that the new normal is something we need to pay attention to. And I said, for example, and move on when reading, we're required to submit a plan, K three, and two pieces of that plan is a ninety-minute reading block and a ninety-minute math block. In the new normal, sitting in front of that screen for ninety minutes may not be the best thing for that child. So what does a concentrated ninety-minute reading block look like in the new normal? What does a concentrated math block look like in the new normal? Because we know that that engagement is not going to be there in, in that respect. So we need to begin to think about how we're going to deal with that, how we're going to change that. And I said, most importantly, then, what we need you to do, Superintendent, is get onboard with the state standards and the state curriculum and say, okay, what's the new normal for those state standards and state curriculum? Because they're built around a brick traditional classroom, six hours a day, a hundred and eighty days a year. So what is that going to look like? And so we need to begin to think about how to put that together in a way that's going to benefit our students. For Page Unified, in terms of our teacher evaluation system, we use what's called Charlotte Danielson's Model, which consists of twenty-two components for quality effective instruction in the classroom. We've backed up and we're now focused just on eight of those components rather than the full twenty-two. And those eight components are all geared toward what does it look like in a virtual learning environment? So again, we're adjusting and moving forward with that virtual learning environment and beginning to adjust in that new environment. Let's go ahead and take the next question up. Penny, would you like to do that?
Of course. So this question, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends no more than one to two hours of screen time for school-aged children. Obviously, that number is going to be exaggerated in this time of virtual everything. But if the research shows that being on screens is not as beneficial to learning, why are our children expected to be plugged in for so long during the day? This is a great question. You know, with COVID, the American Association of Pediatrics actually came out with some new guidance. They, they talked about when faced with the increased screen time for educational purposes, they really recommend balancing it by reducing other opportunities that children have to interact with screens. So you can do this by changing your daily routine. If your children are usually engaged with screens after school, have them take a break and find activities that have nothing to do with screens. That's hard, but it can make the difference. If and when your children interact with screens, they recommend being selective about what they are doing and what they are watching and what content they're using, how and why they are using it. And when using media or screen time, do it together. That's a key point. If you're going to be using it after this educational time. This gives you the opportunity to monitor it and build conversations around it. And don't forget the importance of having a schedule and a predictable routines. So ensure your child is getting enough sleep. School-aged children should be getting ten to twelve hours of sleep. And most importantly, they recommend supporting your child's social emotional development. This can be done by spending time together as a family, especially since children are likely experiencing higher levels of anxiety, stress and trauma. Make time for activities such as walks, board games, reading together and baking or sports. It's really just about that balancing between those two things. We can't necessarily choose always whether our kids are online for school right now. And so it's balancing that with the other activities.
And going with that, it's balancing out with the fact that, you know, like my grandson is a gamer. So when he comes home and he fires up his water-cooled computer, believe it or not, he is online and we talk about that screen time. And then how does that balance with, he starts at eight o'clock and gets out at three thirty for his school day? Now he's on, so what, how's that screen time going to all match out in the future? Good, good, good answer. Good, good question. One of the other questions was based on the newest CDC guidance. How do we ensure? how do we ensure that the ventilation in our school buildings is adequate and safe for students and teachers? Well, keeping perspective that the community, the Community Wellness Committee, which is our local practitioners, medical practitioners, recommended that we return to school at 50% capacity with this hybrid model. We could have returned with a hybrid model with all kids going two days on, three days off. But they said, in order to begin the process, let's look at that 50% capacity. We did a parent survey which shows that 35% of our students are expecting to participate in the hybrid learning, reducing the class load down to four or five students. So that's going to make it even more manageable for us to begin that process and begin to move into that hybrid model. So that 35% coming back is going to, doing us a favor by letting us maintain that physical distancing and strengthen our processes. We are increasing our outdoor air ventilation. We, of course, we got to use caution if we're in a in the spring or fall when all the pollen is out there, want to be careful about that. We're increasing the total airflow supplied occupied, occupied spaces when possible. For example, in the onsite learning, if you went to the gym, we are ramping up those coolers to run at full capacity so that we are cycling the hour, uh, air as much as possible. When weather conditions allow, we'll increase our fresh air, outdoor air by opening windows and doors. But we don't open those doors or windows if they pose a safety hat, risk or safety triggering asthma or falling or something like that. We're checking filters regularly, replacing them much more frequently to ensure that they are within their service life and, life and appropriately installed. We are ensuring ventilation systems operate properly and provide acceptable indoor air quality for the current occupancy level for each space. And so that coming back at 50% capacity or coming back with that 35% that said they're coming in hybrid is helping us reduce that capacity so that we can do testing and see, make sure that we're covering everything with, with quality safety procedures. We are running our HVAC system, a maximum outside airflow for two hours before and after school to circulate the air and, and get that out there. We are using filters that are rated as MERV eight or higher to increase filtration and also changing those on a much more frequent basis. And one of the pieces that go with that question about ventilation is also, we're looking at modified layout. So as Ann showed you, spaced seating desks at least six feet apart were feasible, but learning those rooms so that there's lots of space. Turn desks to face the same direction, have students sit in only one side of tables spaced apart. Modify learning stations and activities so that there are fewer students, which is what the 35% is giving us an opportunity to do to make that happen. So really looking at all the changes that are coming in to protect and maintain a safe environment for all of our students. So that hybrid, wanting a 50%, but actually honoring the 35% that are coming back is great. And we're being, we're very glad to be able to provide the choice to parents on which way they want to go with this. So with that, Ann, you want to answer the next question? I kind of talked to it too, but.
The next question is, why is the district moving to a hybrid model when 80% of the student population has communicated to the district that they wish to remain virtual? I don't have the current district percentage on that. I know that Page High School has around 30% of students coming in person. But our current data, these are the health metrics that we follow as a, a district and educational organization. It indicates that our school district has met the three data benchmarks and it is now safe for us to reopen in a hybrid model, not full traditional brick and mortar. We continue to monitor that situation using county and school district data.
Thank you. And that's, that's really important. So when we did the survey, we didn't do the survey with the intention of saying 80% said, want to stay virtual, so no one should do anything. We did the survey so that we could move kids into virtual or in onsite and that helped us build that environment. So those numbers are down at each site. So we know that classrooms are going to be less full, I guess you could say, for a time being until we get ready to go fully, fully virtual. But we never intended the survey to be 80, this was not a a majority wins kind of thing. This was to give us data so that we could prepare to move forward into that hybrid model. One of the questions that was submitted was, why is the district purposely violating the cultural and ethnic, ethnic identities of our Navajo student population by moving to the hybrid model, purposely ignoring the Navajo Nation's directive and leaving behind our students who live on the reservation? Well, thanks for that question. That's a really good question. A hybrid model and a virtual model does not violate any cultural, ethnic identities of our native student population. All students in Page USD were assigned iPads, K-12 and Chromebooks 312. So that is again, one of the pieces that makes a difference. This moves technology from the classroom into the homes of our families, which is a different, different, new normal. To support technology, to support technology, especially in the rural areas, we purchased 650 hotspots with six-month data plans to increase connectivity during this virtual school. In some instances, a family with three, four, or five children may be assigned two or three hotspots to support the connectivity. Most recently, I read that Navajo Intua Wireless has installed a what I would call, I guess, a mega hotspot at Coppermine and I did a Coppermine chapter meeting Tuesday and we had a really good, clear communication because they had the, the wifi capabilities and the internet capabilities. One is going into Kaibato and as I told the Luchee chapter yesterday in their chapter meeting, there's three, according to the, the Facebook post I saw, there's still three of these mega hotspots available. So jump in there and get down and get those outside the Luchee chapter so that we can work with those too. So we're supporting our students. We also know that some of our students cannot connect to a cell tower and those students seek other ways to connect. Students come to Page and connect from relatives' homes. I've heard many stories about that. I've heard of students going to relatives' homes in Phoenix to be able to connect with school on a daily basis and enroll in school from Phoenix. And again, this to redefines the whole educational environment into a totally different world. So this new world of virtual education has many resolutions and those solutions are not related to cultural or ethnic identities. Being in front of a highly qualified teacher is the goal to meet the learning challenges of our students. And that is what is the most important piece. And putting that virtual screen between them and that teacher has its challenges. I participate weekly in briefings with the Navajo Nation Division of Today Education. Each week about 54 of us participate virtually in an update on the metrics of COVID-19 based on the Navajo Nation's Epidemiology Center and the CDC reporting. The last report on October 6th aligned with our Coconino County Health Department data and revealed that all the chapters in our area are green. The hotspots on the Navajo Nation, because we've heard of those and you've heard of lockdown, are over in the Crown Point Shiprock area. So it's on the other side of the reservation, so to speak. So we're participating in those direct virtual meetings with NDO regarding the executive order. We're not violating the executive order. The executive orders are going to be modified so that they are in working together with what we're doing. One of the things is, was suggested in Tuesday's meeting was we do onsite support. Each principal has an onsite, onsite support center in their school for those teach, students who are going virtually. And one of the suggestions was from Indy, in Navajo Nation Division, DNA Division of Education was, maybe we should run buses for onsite support. And of course, then if we run buses for onsite support, it's not really onsite support, it's really going back to school. So again, we are continuing to work with Navajo Nation Division of DNA Education on a solution that works for our students along with Flagstaff, because we're considered a border town and along with Flagstaff, Winslow, Holbrook, St. Joe, as we all move in those directions. So another question was submitted. Alicia, you want to take that one?
Sure. It says, by moving towards the hybrid model, the students who are learning virtually no longer have access to teacher office hours. Why is the district purposefully ignoring the needs of the majority of the students? Remember, 80% will not be in physical attendance. This is not in alignment with the district's mission statement. This unexpected time of COVID has really pressured everyone to make changes to their daily routines as a means of balancing the social, emotional, physical and mental parts of our beings. A lot of the decisions that we have had to make to to our changes with our structure are not comfortable, but they're necessary in order to make sure that we create and maintain a sense of balance and wellbeing. It is not the intention of the district to ignore the needs of any group of students whether they choose to remain in remote learning or have selected the in-person option for learning. Unfortunately, the COVID pandemic has required the facilitators of learning, who we often refer to as teachers and paraprofessionals, to make adjustments to the structures of learning and supports. These adjustments to the structure include considerations for spring breaks, mass breaks and scaffolded time to adjust to all-day engagement as students are now in learning from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The, each school, due to the learning being back full-time for that timeframe, each school site has created adaptations to support the learnings that they have who are returning to campus and those who are remaining in remote learning. Many of the adaptations that were made to the schedules are age-appropriate and age-specific. For example, here at Page Middle School, we will continue our office hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays during the time that our bus routes are still continuing and that will be available for those students who are in remote learning as well. I encourage you to please check with your school site schedule to see the supports that are being made available during the eight to three day and timeframe so that you can see how your student can continue to receive supports. Our remote learning schedule ended previously or during this time at 12:30 and it was not a schedule that ran all day. And so that allowed that chunk of time to be used for that support. As our after-school programs have now been adjusted due to needing to get students back a busty and bussing and safety measures, then those supports have been placed throughout the day.
Thank you. And I believe, Mary, didn't you describe office hours in your daily schedule? When you were talking about that? In the afternoons?
Yes, we have, we have our schedule is from one to three, we have small group instruction led by the classroom teacher. And so the office hours for parents won't necessarily be between one to three, but the invitation to students to come in and be instructed either retaught or enriched will be within the hours of one to three.
Excellent. Nancy, didn't you have a similar afternoon piece? I mean, I can't imagine the kindergartner being six hours in front of that screen. How are you adapting to that?
Correct. So we do have, as Mary said, a small group instruction scheduled for the afternoon, Monday through Friday. We also have, if you remember what our schedule looked like, for example, our reading block may say 30 minutes. However, that doesn't mean that the student is engaged in synchronous learning for 30 minutes. The teacher may choose to provide direct instruction or or how do I say this? So synchronous learning for maybe half of that time. So the students will be logged in for maybe 15 minutes and then released to do independent practice for the other half of that 30 minutes. So although the block is for 30 minutes, it doesn't mean that they're engaged or glued to the iPad for the entire time.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. Trina, you want to take the next question?
Sure. Um, the research shows that virtual learning should be kept to no more than four hours a day and all of the students will be learning virtually three days a week for six to eight hours. Why? This is not the best practice. PUSD's latest survey indicates that families wish to remain in remote learning environments. New research suggests that by September, most students will have fallen behind where they have been if they had stayed in classrooms with some losing the equivalent of a full school year's worth of academic gains. Racial and socioeconomic achievement gaps will most likely widen because of disparities in access to computers, home internet connections and direct instruction from teachers. The school district has embedded social, emotional learning along with integrating movement strategies to foster physical and psychological self-care among students throughout the day to balance out the longer instructional day. Thank you.
Thanks. Excellent. So we've got those times built in to meet the needs of students. There was another question that said, could the schedule stay the same? And the rest of the in-building school day be used for extra help or enrichment activity? But as you look at each of the schedules that have been presented to you, there's time built in to do that. And so those things are going to continue. That extra help is going to be there. But most importantly, we want that extra help to be used productively so that students are not having to be retaught and retaught and retaught. So just to keep that in mind. This is the hybrid plan. Thank all of you for, for coming into this. This is probably the beginning of the new normal. I suggest we probably need to do this in October, at the end of October, beginning of November to see what the new, new normal is going to look like as we adjust based on the, the way we're approaching our students and staff. Remember, you can be hybrid or you can be virtual. That's your choice. And that was something we're honoring and trying to work with. That's a challenge, a big challenge for our teachers. And we've got different solutions to make that work. Most importantly, if you find that that is not working for you, we have Sage and Sand for sixth through 12th grade where you can go totally virtual, totally virtual and have no onsite learning. And so those are options. We've tried to build those options to meet the needs of our families. We are in a challenge for learning. As Dr. Hubbell said, you know, those kids could lose a full schools, full school year's worth of academic gains. From March to May, we did paper. How well did that work? From May to the summer, we honored the restrictions and did not involve students in any kind of summer school. Now from August to October, we're virtual learning. And we started out with a half day. Now we're going into hybrid learning and we're going into a full day. So the next step will be when we go into that next step of traditional, whatever that is, going back to school full-time for everybody is around the corner. So as we move through this and we get good at this, that's what we're going to be practicing and moving forward to look at. So with all that, I thank you. If you have additional questions, please let us know. But everyone did a great job. And remember, it's principals, my October is Principals Month and want to really honor those principles and make them feel strong. So anything you want to do to help support those principles, please jump in and be a part of that. With that, I thank you and hope you found out all the information you need. Remember, this is on YouTube so you can watch it and review it over and over and over again. Thanks, everyone. Goodbye.